This episode of the Bill and Kelly Show is brought to you by the Committee to Elect, Alencia Bellard, High School Board Member at Large. The Bill and Kelly Show is recorded at Studio A at Executive Suite Squared in beautiful Hammond, Indiana. Now here's Bill and Kelly. Hello and welcome to the Bill and Kelly Show. With us today, we are very honored to have Alencia Bellard, who is running for a spot on the Highland, the Town of Highland School Board. Alencia, welcome to our show.
Thank you, Bill.
And we're so happy you're here, you know, as you heard prior to the show, and you folks missed this, Kelly sung the spirit song from Highland High School. You really missed a treat. Sorry. But so what we like to start out with is finding out more about you, where you're from, and then work our way into why you're running for the school board. So tell us a bit about yourself.
Well, Bill, I was born and raised in Chicago, Illinois. I moved here to Highland just almost about 16 years ago now, and we've been loyal Highland citizens ever since. I never want to go back. I always tell my husband, we will never have another Cook County address if I can help it. So been involved in a lot of things here in town, mainly coaching the kids. I ran the, the track program for the Lincoln Center for several years, I want to say four, maybe five years. I've been on the Highland soccer, serving on the Highland Soccer Board as the referee coordinator for about the same amount of time, maybe four or five years. My husband has been coaching for, God, who knows, maybe six or seven years now? I don't know. So we are both known around town as Coach Lynn and Coach Kevin. We've got two daughters in the Highland Schools, one in middle school, one in high school. So we are, you know, rooted and grounded right here in Highland. So.
Yeah, it's a great community. It really, it's got a lot of neat things going on. So tell us a bit about what brought you to decision to run for school board?
Well, it wasn't a decision that I didn't, you know, make lightly. It definitely took some time to think about it. It's a, it's a commitment. It's a huge responsibility, and I take it very seriously. But my, my plan for the first year is exactly what I think the school board needs. One, we've got to improve communication, right? First, we've got to recognize that, that there is a need for improvement, right? Anything that's good can still be improved on, improved on, right? So just because we need improvement doesn't mean it's bad, doesn't mean it's horrible, just means that we need improvement. So looking to improve communication with the board, and with that, to increase transparency and accountability. So these are some of the things that I'd like to bring as a newcomer to the board, things where I believe I can contribute. Definitely want to get teachers involved. So as you know, with the crazy world that we live in today, with the pandemic, you and I talked briefly already about, you know, a lot of school boards are facing a lot of challenges and figuring out how to educate while keeping everyone in the building safe. That being said, I think we have to really make some, make some strides toward thoughtful planning. And when I say thoughtful planning, I don't mean that, you know, we just, you know, throw something out there after we talk about it for a couple hours. I mean, really dig down deep, think things through, and get the teachers involved. Because ultimately, at the end of the day, the teachers, the staff, the administrators, they're going to be the ones that have to execute that plan. And how many times, if you've ever seen a company that, where they make the decisions at the top and then roll it out for everybody down at the bottom, so to speak, to, to, you know, to push forward with, many times those initiatives fail. And I want to make sure that Highland has a better chance for success on things like that, and especially during these uncertain times when things are changing day to day, hour to hour, minute to minute even. We want to make sure that the people who are actually doing the work are involved in the planning and the execution. And with that comes the third thing, which is listening to our teachers. We have to believe them when they tell us the challenges that they're facing, and then we have to look and try really, really hard to provide them the solutions that they say that they need. And in my opinion, only then will we really start to see the progress that I think we all are looking for, for Highland students.
Right, true. Getting buy-in and getting it, you know, there's never been a good decision made with one person, you know, unless it's whether you brush your teeth in the morning or not. You know, I'd say brush your teeth. But, but you get what I'm saying. It's just, as a manager for well over 38 years, I always, I couldn't imagine making a decision without getting input from people I work with and people, and in the case of people who have their foot on the ground, that are in that, in that classroom, yeah, and especially important because they know what their students need to succeed. They, you know, that's why they became teachers, and not to get that input is just fractured, if you ask me. It just is not a good way of rolling out an educational program. So, so what about that, talking about that, as a school board member, do you, and something that I don't know, and I don't think they had them when I lived there a little while ago, but are the school board meetings streamed live? Or do you, you know, they are not?
They are not. In fact, I was just at a school board meeting this past Tuesday night, and one of the community members asked about that, and I believe the president did say that she was going to look into it. But at this moment, no, they are not streamed live. What community members have been doing is literally bringing their cell phone so that they can either record it and post it later for other people to see, or they've been going live on Facebook. So we've been improvising, they've been improvising so that some of the information can be shared with community members who would like to be there, but for whatever reasons can't be. We have a lot of people who want to come, but in that small room, you know, and a pandemic going on, they're either at high risk and can't take the chance, or just don't feel comfortable being in a room with that many people at the same time. So, and that's understandable. So.
No, and actually, gosh, I, I may be totally wrong here, but I thought that there was an ordinance passed just recently, as recent as two to three years ago, where if you didn't have wide broadcast of your meeting, whether it be a town, city council meeting, or school board, you had to provide very next day a recording so that the public can get, give a quick access to the agenda items and everything, because that's all public information. And I could be wrong, but I know Valparaiso was challenged with that from their community, and they quickly went to an online meeting. I.
I'll have to look into that.
Yeah, it may be worth looking, and I may be totally wrong, but I, I thought that there was a state ordinance requiring some quick access to the agenda items and actually the, the business at the meeting. So the only thing that was forgiven because of personnel matters was the executive sessions. You know, you just had to notify when those happened and, and, you know, give everyone fair access to know when they're happening. But school board meetings, public meetings, I'm pretty sure are supposed to be totally public now. And in a pandemic, there's no other option. So, so given that aside, so transparency, that would be one way, obviously, is to open those school board meetings up, because to be honest, yeah, I don't, with the numbers in Indiana, I don't think there's going to be a way of having an open door meeting where people are going to be comfortable going at. So now, was your general feeling that businesses going on, decisions are being made without the input of the public and the teachers? Or what is your general sense there?
Well, yes, in a sense, that is, that's what, that is what has been happening. To no fault of the school board, again, the meetings are public. I know that they consistently post the meeting time and dates on their marquee right outside of the building. I know it's always online and a couple other different places, most likely. But up to this point, the community at large just hasn't participated. One of the board members told me that up to recently, they could expect two people, and they were excited about two people being in the room for a school board meeting. So that's one of the things that I anticipate changing. First year on the board, my plan is to identify 10 different organizations, whether they be student-led, teacher-led, community, parent, otherwise-led. I'm looking for 10 different organizations that will commit to sending one member per month to every single school board meeting so that we can have involvement and participation from the community at large. That's something I want to change. That's the only way that we improve communication and transparency, and of course, accountability.
Yeah, definitely. And by the way, develop those schools, it's, their meetings are all done, and I think this has been, maybe not the town board meeting here, but they're being done by Zoom. The board members are all conducting a meeting by Zoom. So, and, and then members of the community can ask questions during the public participation section. So transparency is an issue, the platform that you're running on, opening up, making sure the public knows, and, and even the teachers, and they're given opportunity to give input about decisions that are going to be made that ultimately affect them. What are your feelings on the relationship between the school, the school town of Highland and the community at large? I mean, being that there is somewhat of a disconnect with communication, is there a, what type of relationship is that right now? What is the barometer there?
Well, I think this, again, going back to the pandemic, COVID-19 has really brought to light for a lot of members of the community how important it is to know what's going on with the school board, what decisions are being made, what the plans are, and that sort of thing. Whereas in the past, you know, many people just maybe took it for granted, or just weren't focused on that for whatever reasons. I think the light, in light of the world's recent events and all the changes we've had to endure, it's really put a spotlight on how important those decisions are. So that being said, again, this is now, now you introduce, you got basically two new groups who are figuring out how to work together, right? School boards never really had to work with the community much, communities never really had to work with the school board much. And anytime you have a new relationship, there's bound to be conflict. I believe that there have been some very tense conversations, very emotional discussions, and rightly so. You know, these, we're talking about people's children, we're talking about people's lives, jobs, their livelihood. So naturally, anytime any of those things are threatened or seem to be in jeopardy in any kind of way, people are going to be emotional. And so I think it's important for, one of the teachers said it the other night at the school board meeting, it's important for us as the adults in the room to be careful how we treat one another, how we talk to one another, because the children are watching, and they'll, and they will emulate what we do. And we need to set a good example first and foremost, as we all figure out a path forward. Because we, again, we're all in this together. We can't do this, not, neither one of us, not any one of us can do this all alone, right? We all need each other to work through this together. And that is where I believe we're all starting to get to. I believe everybody wants that, but at the same time, I believe there is still a lot of unanswered questions, a lot of frustration, and just a lot of confusion about, you know, how we get to where we need to be, and how we get the things that, you know, the parents, the teachers, the students needs. So it's a long road. It is not something we can solve in a day, and I don't think it's going to be all resolved anytime soon. It's a, it's an ever-changing time, and unfortunately, it requires us to, you know, to be able to change. We've got to be flexible. So.
Right. And the other thing is, I would ask the question, during like closing situations, I do, does Highland School have a call-out system where they notify parents of various different things that could affect the opening of school or delay of school? And how is that handled?
Well, pre-pandemic, we definitely had call-out systems where we would get phone calls, say, for example, for snow days, right? We could always expect that phone call if the school opening would be delayed or canceled, and students would be attending school through e-learning and that sort of thing. The, the pandemic, however, since the students went back to school, September 28th, or some students, from, from what I gather from school board meetings, about 75% of the students are in school, 25% are still e-learners. But since the, since the schools opened their doors September 28th, there have not been any call-outs. The school doors have not closed. So in cases of positive tests results for COVID-19, they are contact tracing and quarantining individuals. So only those individuals are not allowed back in the building until after they've either quarantined and showed no symptoms, or tested, tested, or tested negative for the virus.
What about the others in that classroom? Is that, or do they quarantine the classroom that they were in, or just that individual?
From my understanding, they are not quarantining in the entire classroom. It is some, something like, if you're within three feet of the person for more than 15 minutes, or something like that, and then, so I honestly, I don't know how the contact tracing is happening, and that's, I know that's for a lot of parents out there. That's one of the frustrating, frustrating things. My children are e-learners, so we haven't, we don't have that necessary risk of, you know, we don't necessarily have the risk of being, you know, in close proximity to someone in the school with COVID-19. So, but no, there's no call-out system for that. And again, the, I think that, I think the school's doing the best they can with the contact tracing. I honestly do. I think it's just one of those things, I mean, you have to imagine, right? If you've got, you got this one kid who tested positive or showing symptoms, now you got to go back, you know, maybe four or five days ago, and figure out who they were around for more than 15 minutes and less than three feet apart from four or five days ago. I don't know about you, but I can't remember sometimes what I did, who I was around yesterday, you know, let alone four or five days ago. So.
And can you imagine, I'm asking a first grader or kindergartner, well, can you remember who you're around, like, everybody?
Right. And again, throw in the fact that they're kids. I mean, really, can you imagine trying to contact trace with that? And even at the high school, just think about, you know, how many kids they're passing in the halls, or, you know, stopping to talk to, you know, in the lunchroom, or what, whatever the case may be. So I imagine it's a very difficult job. And the teachers, imagine trying to keep up with who's due back in your classroom, who's not, who's out now, and for what, and what they need to have when they come back. Do they need a positive or negative test result, or are they just out for 14 days, or, you know, whatever the case may be. So it's a nightmare for everybody involved.
Yeah, I know. And really, every school district handles it differently. And in fact, we just had a judge on our show with having to deal with truancy matters and all. And part of her frustration is that every school district has different policies with e-learning, and who's called back, who's not called back, and to deal with truancy now has been a real issue, because what is considered truant? And now you have virtual learning, where, you know, if a student doesn't show up for virtual learning, you know, what, you know.
You got it.
COVID, not that it's created complexity and catastrophic event for business, but education, which was already an immensely complex nature in itself, you're dealing with standards, you're dealing with different curriculum, having to be updated constantly, is probably the most complex portion of my career that I was ever involved in. And to add that to it. So, I mean, my hats are always off to educators and, and the teachers, just because it is very complex. It's not, you know, us working out in the commercial world have it easy. So let's talk about, we'll move back to the pandemic later, but more importantly, talking about the, the standards and so on, let's pretend the pandemic didn't happen. Are there any other issues of advocacy that you feel that you would bring to the school board? Outside the communication, what do you feel about the performance of Highland Schools?
I think the Highland Schools perform very well. And again, just going back to supporting the teachers, I think that we can improve upon what we've already done with simply providing additional solutions for the teachers whenever they face challenges. I personally believe that the teachers have a lot, a lot on their plate. Many times, they're often burdened with additional tasks besides just delivering the curriculum. I'd really like to see some of those things removed from their place so they can really focus on delivering that robust curriculum that we want them to have, so that the students can get the most out of the learning. I realize that that most likely would involve hiring additional employees that maybe they're not in the budget, but I think there's ways that we can get creative and offering additional solutions so that we can free up that teacher's time, so that they can really focus on delivering the curriculum.
Right. Yeah. And, you know, I'm looking at the scoreboard here at the state, and for 40% free and reduced lunch, it's a B, which is amazing. I mean, generally, that high of free and reduced lunch, you would have a C and struggling at that. So, and it looks like all their test scores are above the state standard. And, but then I'm looking at the markup, the demographics in the ethnic markup, Asian is 1.6, Black African American, 8.3, there are no Hawaiian or Pacific Islanders, we never had any, well, we had one or two, I think. Hispanics are, make up a large portion of the population at 33.3%, multiracial, 2.6%, no Native Americans, the white is at 54.2%. But yet, it's interesting, it looks like to me, from these, unless I'm misunderstanding, a good portion of the white demographic is a portion of the free and reduced lunch as well. So it's kind of an interesting makeup. But again, by all means and standards, a curriculum is evidently being driven pretty well out there. It just sounds like they, they need to communicate more with the public and, and with their teachers.
Absolutely.
So what about the culture within the Highland Schools? Do you feel like there is any unfair practices against some of these ethnic backgrounds, Hispanic or people of color?
Well, Bill, you're always, there's always going to be something, right? And I, I think you'd be hard-pressed to go to any school across the United States that is, you know, diverse in any stretch of, you know, in any, in any way. I think you'd be hard-pressed to find a school that doesn't have some challenges, right? Given the political climate, the social climate, our kids see the news, right? They know what's going on to some degree. And let's not forget, our kids are raised by parents who are, you know, on one side of the aisle or the other, right? So those things are going to spill over into the school. I think what's important is for our school to have a true and honest understanding of diversity. I think it's important for our, our school administrators and teachers to embrace diversity and to even teach it to some degree. When the, when the uncomfortable issue of race arises, or discrimination arises, or any other type of unfair treatment, I think it's important for the school officials to act swiftly, immediately. I think it's important for them to be unshakable in their zero tolerance policies. And at least at the high school, I have, not personally witnessed or seen it, but I have heard firsthand accounts of how well the administrators have handled difficult situations like that. Even, you know, things that happen between students in, outside of the classroom, maybe in social media and things of that nature, when it gets addressed at the school to resolve those issues, I think that's, that's very important. And so as it relates to diversity in the classrooms, diversity in the school, we have a mixed population, we have a diverse population, as you just shared with us the numbers. And I think the, the important thing that students who are underrepresented needs to know is that they count too, right? Those students need to feel supported, they need to feel valued, they need to feel heard. And I think that's one of the unique things that I can bring to the school board. As a woman of color, not only would, would my appointment to the school board, my election to the school board, give the school board a more diversified look, right, that more, that represents the actual community, but it will also be a step in the right direction for making sure that underrepresented students have a voice, and that they are not forgotten, and that they are not left behind in those major decisions, or even the not-so-major decisions. We want to be, we want to make sure that they're included in major and minor decisions. And so, you know, my, my personal passion, if elected to the school board, will be to make sure that in all things that we do, in all decisions we make, we are not excluding anyone, and we are equally including everyone. And so what that means is, I'm not necessarily the advocate for the minority students, I am the advocate for all students, making sure that we don't forget about the minority students. And Bill, nowadays, minority students is not, we're not talking about this underrepresented students, we're not just talking about ethnicity and race, we're not just talking about sexual orientation or sex, we're not just talking about special needs and disabilities, right? With COVID-19, we have a whole new group of underrepresented students. Guess what they are? They're the e-learners, right? Think about this scenario. When you go into a retail store, and somebody's helping you find a blue pinstripe dress shirt with, you know, what is it, a 33 and a half inch neck, right? You want to find just the right one. If they're helping you with something and their phone rings, do they tell you to hold on a second and answer the phone? No, they let the phone ring, right? Because that customer on the phone, unfortunately, is less important in that moment than the customer that's face-to-face. And that's the scenario our e-learners are facing right now. They're battling for attention with the students that are in person, that are in front of the teacher, that are in class. They're, they're battling, fighting, they're crying for attention, right, from their teachers. They need that support and that attention. And so one of my, one of my goals will be to make sure that we design an e-learning platform where the students who are in those e-learning classes can still feel supported and can still have direct interaction with their, with their teacher. Now, this might not be something that has to wait until I'm elected to school board. I actually had a chance to talk to Mr. I actually had a chance to talk to Mr. Smith after Tuesday night's meeting. And we're actually talking about having a meeting sometime here soon about that very thing. I have some ideas about how we can improve e-learning today, right now, this minute. So he's open to that, which is an awesome thing. So we're gonna get together and talk about some things. And hopefully he'll like some of my ideas and we can get those implemented in the school right away.
Right. And you are right. That that is a the great now, let me, just so I understand, because I really don't even pretend to know what is going on now. Cause every school is different and how they are doing this. It's kind of interesting that there isn't a state plan that's saying this is the way it should be done. But you know, hey, so it isn't. So you gotta do what you gotta do. So how does that? So e-learning, every day is e-learning. So so these students and these, there's are, there are no teachers are dedicated to e-learning. It's the same teacher that's teaching classroom instruction that is also monitoring these students. Wow.
That is correct. And you know, you mentioned the state plans. And so what the state plans do is provide a minimum, right? They provide you the bare minimum that you have to, that you have to do, that you have to provide to the students. And what I would propose is that, you know, dare I say, the minimum is just not enough, right? So my proposal would be to take it a step further, right? We need to take it maybe even a couple steps further and provide some additional support. Just getting creative, you know, with how we do things, the way we do things now. Because again, I refuse to call it the new normal because I think life will go back to the way we once knew it, you know, back to two thousand nineteen one day. But for now, you know, we have to make it, we have to make adjustments for right now, for what we need today.
Yes, it does seem, because this is new for everyone. I mean, you know, we did have e-learning, but it was everyone e-learning. Whole snow days and so on. And quite frankly, I could see, oh, man, I wouldn't wanna be that teacher. Cause it is, that needs to be talked about, you know, the Teachers Association should be concerned. You know, what load is being put on that teacher in delivering instruction to in-person and virtual? That I, that's a lot to ask any teacher. So given that, it seems like there needs to be a conversation which brings in the parents. You know, does anyone know what it looks like from a student's perspective when they're trying to raise their hand and get the teacher's attention? And boy, this reminds me of a YouTube video that's quite comical, where a teacher became disconnected off of Zoom. And they they showed the picture of the students just panicking. They didn't know what to do. What happened to Mrs. Smith? What happened? Is she coming back? Yeah, she'll come. Oh, they were just, they were just falling apart. It was comical, actually. Kind of sad, cause one started crying. But but yes, that is a very taxing environment. And we've got to learn from it. We have to bring in all the stakeholders and say, is this right? It should we have a teacher's aide helping and trying to maybe be the what am I trying to look for? The person to go between the teachers? So the teacher isn't being constantly interrupted with this separate mechanism when she has all the safety to be concerned of the kids that are. And that is a task in itself, because now you have all these COVID guidelines that she's or he's got to monitor as well. And and then to be concerned about someone needs a question asked. It seems like there should be an aide or someone helping the teacher out, trying to go between, between the e-learning and that. Because, oh, my goodness. Sales increased in Highland.
Right. The word you're looking for is facilitator, right? That's the word you're looking for.
And I gotta apologize to all, some of the Highland teachers I do know. I do, you drink excessively, but I probably would if I were you. But that that is a very taxing environment. And I agree with you, there should be some discussion and people brought in to try to understand that situation better. Because our children's future are at risk. And no one should be looked upon or frowned upon for taking that e-learning option. Because there could be health concerns, immune deficiency, any number of things, why they can't. And so, yeah, it, yeah, it's, so, yeah, I I hope the best for that conversation. But it it's something that I think is is being talked about. I know Velpo had a lot of problems in discussions with their community. And they came up with, I think, a e-learning day where everyone goes home and e-learns on. I think it's a Wednesday and that provided teachers enough time to take a break and regroup and and still interact with the with students as well. So, but yeah, boy, just thinking what goes through. Oh, my goodness. I'm sweating just thinking about it. What other issues do you think are before? I mean, this is an extremely complex environment. I, you know, I don't know what's being talked about with forgiveness of state standards, the testing. What's going on with that? And this is the guy that used to be on top of that. Very fact, that was part of my job description of the to administer I-step testing. So what is going on with that per se? Is the state still holding the schools accountable for administering the I-step testing?
Yeah, as far as I know, the 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 testing requirements have not been let up. Just recently, I know the sophomores in the high school were called to do PSAT tests. So I know that the, yeah, the state exams continue on.
God forbid if those ever stopped, right? Man, gosh, bringing back some bad memories here. So, yeah, but I mean, well, that is something like the the state should at least identify that they they should kind of relax and understand that there's going to be a variation. Students' lives have been disrupted greatly, you know, just with trying to negotiate, are we gonna have in-person or at home? That that's a difficult conversation to be had. And nothing should be kept lightly because it's school grading and everything is, you know, school performance is based upon, you know, how they're gonna get funded in the future. So, boy, that geez, man, this sounds like a very, very intriguing conversation that should be had. So what other issues do you feel that you need to advocate for for the Highland schools?
That's not enough?
Yeah, you, the way you described that classroom learning, I tell you that, that's a whole two years conversation if you ask me. Boy, and that that's, boy, and who knows how long this is gonna be.
Right.
You know, so that conversation has to be open or at least, you are now, are there, has there been, as you, as long as you've been a parent in the Highland school system? Has there been any outreach to like parent teacher associations? Has the administration gone to those and and given updates of what's going on and policy changes?
Well, um, as a whole, I don't think so. I think individually. I know Victor recently mentioned that he was at, I wanna say, the Warren PTO meeting recently. I think it was at Warren Middle Elementary School. Forgive me if I have the wrong school. But I remember he said that.
Right across the street from Warren. Not that I wanna make everyone know where Victor Garcia lives, but.
Oh, okay. So I know at least for him, he has reached out. It wasn't, you know, there wasn't no opportunity for all the other members to say yay or nay if they had done the same thing. But as far as I know, it doesn't sound like something that's mandated. I guess they do it as their schedules permit. And just kind of going back to your question, I jokingly, you know, said, isn't that enough? But, you know, one of the other things that, you know, will, that I'll have to advocate for, as I imagine all board members would is, you know, life beyond COVID, right? This has been such a huge disruption in the whole school year for everybody, right? School year and a half, cause keep in mind, this started at the tail end of last school year. So now this is, this whole thing has spilled over into actually two school years. And who knows if it'll spill over into the third? We don't know what the recovery is gonna look like. We don't know how students are gonna rebound from this. How how kids' grades will or school ratings or or buildings or even staff are gonna rebound. We've had a record number of resignations and leaves of absences and all sorts of things here in Highland, just since this all started. So we don't know.
Personnel? Oh.
Yes, teachers and, you know, everyone from nurses and teachers to lunchroom aides and janitors. They're all, they've all been affected by this. And we don't know what post-COVID is gonna look like. So it's difficult to know how you plan for the rebound, you know, when you're still in the midst of it, right?
Right.
So.
Yeah, one would suspect, like, from an engineering background, you always plan for the worst in your design and to make sure.
Absolutely.
And then, you know, that seems like the conversation should be happening. We we can't plan on students going back. We need to plan for this being
Right.
inevitable. And and, you know, if if they go back, then life is back the way it used to be. It should all click back into place. But our numbers are not showing that right now. I mean, I, it's horrifying just to see the, and and each school is now keeping a dashboard in in each county. But the Indiana State Health Association, those, every time I, I think it's like twice a day now that I get reports of the increases in infections. And, boy, you know, I I don't know if it's a wave happening. But I guess it's a thing that we need to talk about, not assume that this is gonna go away. So.
That is true.
Now, so, well, he, boy, so we probably should start wrapping things up here. And what, is there anything else you wanna share? I I guess I've asked all of the, I I'm sorry if I call you a politician, but you're running for office, you're running for position, right? So, okay, so.
Can I tell you a funny story?
Go right ahead, please.
Oh, may not be funny. It's funny to me every time I think about it. So I mentioned before that I, it took me some, I took some time, right, to make this decision to run for school board. And when I finally made the decision, somebody said, okay, well, you gotta go and you gotta get ten signatures and you gotta do all this stuff. And so I did that. I went to the, went to the Lake County Board of Elections and picked up the paperwork so I could get my signatures. And when I went to turn it in, the lady said, okay, now you need a campaign package. And I said, a campaign package? She says, yeah. And she opens it up and she starts explaining to me all these things that I have to do for my campaign. And Bill, it wasn't until she went through this campaign package that I realized that, oh, wait, now I'm a politician. I'm running for office. I've never thought of myself as a politician. I'm just, you know, if somebody said, well, Alencia, who are you? I'm just a regular person. I'm just a mom who looked at what was going on. And I looked around and said, somebody needs to do something. And instead of waiting for somebody else, I decided today somebody is gonna be me. I'm gonna step up. I'm gonna do something. And little did I know that make that decision would throw me into a world that I've never been into and give me a title that I've never had before, which is politician.
Or public servant is one of them.
Public servant. There you go. I like that better.
Yeah, there you go. It sounds a little bit more palatable.
Yes.
You know, cause politicians, sometimes that is negative connotation. So I I get. So getting back to the question here, so if I can ask you, and I asked all of the people we've had on running for public office to put yourself in the voter's shoes, a a parent, if you know, in Highland. What would you want to hear from you on what you are going to do once you get on the school board? What are your values? What what can you tell yourself as a voter that would reassure you that, yes, you are the candidate that I should vote for?
Well, I think a lot of, or at least my supporters now, I think I've gained the support of so many people already because they feel like I will listen, because they feel like they can, that I can relate to them. I believe that my supporters see me as someone who will be, you know, an advocate for their kids. I mean, I, anybody who knew me before today, I used to, you know, I I used to refer to myself as a mama bear. And everybody knew that I'm a mama bear. And I always believed that as a parent, that was my job to be the biggest advocate for my kids, to never stop advocating for what my kids need. And so, you know, in that sense, you know, you know, that that's what I bring to the table. I I'm the mama bear that they need up there advocating for their kids, you know? And in all honesty, Bill, I think it's really just that simple. I don't have, you know, I already told you, I'm not, you know, you know, I was naive. Didn't even dawn on me in the beginning that this was running for public office, that I'd actually have to run a campaign and, you know, do those sorts of things.
The Bill and Kelly Show.
Exactly. So.
A lot of people have never been, and still to this day, there's a lot of people. I know it's hard to believe, but.
No, 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 it's fine. But in in some ways, being naive even about that in the beginning, I think it it's definitely humbled me. But I think it has a different connection with voters that they understand. This is just, you know, when they look at me, they'll say, this is just a real person who is passionate about making some real change. I'm not trying to shake things up. I'm not trying to, you know, run anybody else off the board. And I'm certainly not, you know, in no way, you know, trying to I I guess like, you know, be a threat, if you will, to anybody, right? I'd like to, you know, be elected to the school board and join a a circle of people, a small intimate group of people and work with them toward the solutions. My, my, the things that I wanna advocate for, my top three are the things that I'm most passionate about. And hopefully, the rest of the board members will see value in that and get behind me and support that. Again, going back to it, you know, transparency and communication, accountability, those things. How could you not agree with that, right? You've gotta agree with that. This is a, this is an elective position. We are public servants. These are public meetings. Absolutely, we should have those things. Should everybody want to be thoughtful in their planning and involve the teachers and the staff and the and the administrators in the execution of those plans? I think they should, right? Do we wanna listen to teachers? Do we wanna believe them when they tell us the challenges they have and the solutions they need? I think we should. And so those being my top three, I really expect that the board members, the current board members and and, you know, whoever else is elected to the board at the same time, because as you know, there's two seats. But I believe all of us as board members can agree that my top three are important enough that the entire board can get behind. And I think the voters, the community, the parents, the teachers, the students even. I think they will agree that those are important enough issues that they can get behind them as well.
Yeah, definitely. Boy, boy, it sounds like you got your work cut out for you. So.
I think I do.
And by here, passion, definitely, you definitely have the passion and your concern for your community. Which is, was my dad would say, that's what he lived and breathed. He was concerned about the community and wanted to make sure everyone got what they should and make sure they vote too. So I wanna end up by saying that, folks out there, and we we're kind of late in the game, but we're still you know, we're, we got all the way up till November third, early voting is gonna be available. We put out on our show a place for all three counties, La Porte, Porter and Lake County. So please, please get out there and vote. And Alencia, boy, I tell you what, my my greatest respect for you for stepping up and and taking on this challenge and having run at it, we wish you the best. And by, I tell you, both Kelly and I wholeheartedly are behind your efforts and and the best for you. And, gosh, with that, I guess we'll start wrapping up the show.
Okay. Hey, Bill, let me, can I just say one more important thing about voting? A lot of people may not know this, but your name and address follow you wherever you go to vote. So if you're voting, if you live in Highland, you can go to anywhere in Lake County to vote at the at the Lake County Building in Crown Lake County Building in Crown Point. You can go to Sherrville, Munster, Highland, you can go to Hammond, any of those locations. As long as you have your proper ID and take your voter's registration card just in case. But as long as you have that information, you can vote your entire ballot. You can pull it up. They can pull it up at any of those locations and you can vote. You don't have to just go to the place that's closest to your home. Just want to make sure everybody knows that.
Early voting, November third, you've got to go to your appointed polling.
Exactly, for all that, thank you for early voting, you can vote wherever.
Vote is often, you want, so I didn't say that.
No, thank you.
So, yeah, all right, so, yeah, please do exercise your right to vote and please do it with thought. And and remember, if you do run in any problems, get a hold of the election board right away. If you feel like your vote is being suppressed or they're not going to allow you to vote, please. Be loud about it and get to wherever you need to do. I I think you can look up your election board number and call it and voice a complaint if someone is keeping you from voting or. You know, if the lines are long, how many locations? I gosh, there are about twelve or so.
I think there are twelve.
Twelve locations in in Lake County alone, so there you go. So, well, we we better wrap up the show so you can go be a politician and campaign. Best of luck to you, Alencia.
Thank you very much, Bill.
And, you know, Kelly's heart is with it. I I really, next time we'll have her sing again.
On camera while we're recording.
Yes, yes. With that, we'll say goodbye. We want everyone to please have a safe and enjoyable rest of the day and please vote.
Absolutely.
For now.
Bye.
This episode of the Bill and Kelly Show is brought to you by. The Committee to Elect Alencia Bellard, High School Board Member at Large.